Welcome to the Fall 2020 Town Meeting. I call this meeting to order. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted, published, and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. I now ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to try to move through this as quickly as possible, so I'm just going to quickly recognize the town officials here today. Our Select Board, Aaron Underhill, James McCaffrey, and Peter Germain. Our Town Administrator, Mike Kozinski. Our Finance Director, Carol Johnston. Town Council, Jay Tallerman. We have our Town Clerk, Lisa Harden, and our Assistant Town Clerk, Kathy Smith. So I want to thank everybody who helped get us here today. It was a lot of work. I'm just going to read through a couple of very quick rules for you. Now that everybody is seated, please don't change your seat or move your chair. If you're ready to speak to a motion, please stand up. You'll be recognized and asked to move to the mic. We will be disinfecting the mic between each person speaking. And if anybody does need the restrooms, they're through the door through the cafeteria that's open, and you just walk through and file a signage. And then after the meeting is concluded, we ask that no one linger. We've got nine articles on the warrant, and you're here to deliberate and vote on those articles. The Finance Committee will present them, and they will review all articles in the budget proposals, and they will present their recommendations. So since we are looking to move this along, I think we're just going to move forward at this point. And at this time, I call upon the Chair of the Finance Committee, Jody Garzon, to introduce the Finance Committee and address you regarding their deliberations.
Good afternoon. I'm Jody Garzon, the Chair of the Finance Committee. With me here are the other members, Peter Berube, Jim Boardman, Joyce Boyardi, Kathy McGinnis, Sean Power, Doug Riley, Craig Schultz, and Katie Too. Our Administrative Assistant is Deirdre Gillman, who, she helps keep us organized and running efficiently every week. Without her help, we would be lost. So I thank her for all her help this year in getting us ready for these two town meetings. Yeah, thanks. At this town meeting, we're presented with nine articles for consideration. In the Finance Committee report, you can find a brief description of each article, as well as a breakdown of proposed funding sources for each article, which you will hear in the motions the Finance Committee members will make. Also included with this Finance Committee report is a report from our Capital Planning Committee. We're hoping that with these additional resources provided to you here at town meeting, you can be well informed about the context and the implications of the warrant articles that are presented to you for consideration today. While this year's town meeting will be conducted differently than before, we appreciate that you've joined us to make these important decisions as a town. We ask for your careful consideration of every article here. We encourage you to ask questions so that we can consider every article presented and collectively make the best choices for our town as we move forward together. Thank you very much for being here.
Okay. We will now move to consider Article One. Mr. Schultz.
I move to town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $16,431.60, transfer the sum of $214.31 from sewer enterprise reserves, and transfer the sum of $600.51 from water enterprise reserve for a total sum of $17,246.48 for the unpaid bills as written in the warrant. I'm required to read each of these, but they're written in your warrant, so you can follow along as we go. From the Town Administrator Department, for Cybercom Inc., $2,500; Town of Millis, $46.04; Ad Print, $82; Town of Millis, $21.35; Blue Tarp, Northern Tool, $19.98; Conway Technology, $106.20; Atlas Service Company, $640. From the DPW Department, WB Mason, $36.65; WB Mason, $177.66; Geosphere, $3,225; Town of Millis, $245.96; Town of Millis, $224.92; Town of Millis, $204; Town of Millis, $209.60; Imperial Ford, $81.60; Mass Mobile Inspections, $1,375; Safe Life Fulfillment, Inc., $454.94; Turf Productions, Turf Products, $82.79; Woodco Machinery, $313.68; K&amp;K Mulch, $570; United Ag &amp; Turf, $253.67. From the Department DPW, from the General Fund, further from the DPW, we have United Ag &amp; Turf for $81.40; United Ag &amp; Turf, $95; United Ag &amp; Turf for $504; United Ag &amp; Turf, $265.64; TR Miller Company, $504.10; and again, TR Miller Company, $504.10; EverSource, That's from Fire, I'm sorry, the previous two were, TR Miller were from Fire, EverSource is from Fire for $814.64. EverSource for the police, $3,109.13. From the Town Clerk's Office, LHS Associates for $213.55 for a total from general and unpaid bills of $16,431.66. DPW, WB Mason, $36.65, and again, WB Mason for $177.66 for a total from the Sewer Enterprise Fund of $214.31. And again, the DPW, WB Mason, $36.65; WB Mason, $171.66; Mass Easy Pass, $11.65; Power Up Generator, $167.05; Power Up Generator, $207.50 for a total from the Water Enterprise Funds of $600.51 for a total unpaid bills of $17,246.48.
Second. Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded and this will need four fifty votes to pass.
Madam Moderator, these are bills that came in in FY20 and have not yet been paid. They came in after we closed the accounting deadline, and since we can't appropriate funds without a town meeting vote. It's a standard housekeeping article that occurs every year at this time, so these are just bills that came in after the accounting deadline that do need to be paid.
Any discussion? Mr. Angelo, there's someone behind you first, please. Please move forward, yeah, in the pink, please.
First of all, what a beautiful day.
Can you move a little closer?
Wonderful, perfect. I just have a question.
Can you state your name and your?
Marsha Collins, 12 Colav.
Great.
How come the bills for the sewer and the water aren't being taken out of the surplus of their funds rather than the general funds?
Sir?
The, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
The sewer and water bills are being paid out of the Sewer and Water Enterprise Funds and the, which bill in particular are you speaking of? Madam Moderator, I'm not sure which bill she's speaking of.
Ma'am?
It says, the last two items, total sewer enterprise unpaid bills. And then it says total water enterprise unpaid bills. So why are they coming out of the general fund, not their funds?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
They are not. The two bills above that $214 where it says sewer enterprise fund, the $36.65 WB Mason and the $177.66, those are coming out of the sewer and enterprise unpaid bills. You can see above that line, two lines up, total general fund unpaid bills is $16,431, and that's the sum of all the bills above those. So the total is $17,246, but that's made up of three parts.
So we're only using $16,431 out of the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Angelo.
Jim Angelo, Lavender Street. Two questions. What are the Town of Millis bills to the Town Administrator and to the DPW? And my other question would be, on the DPW, it seems like they have a lot of items that you would think would be in their normal budget. I mean, why are we doing this stuff off budget?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
The Town of Millis, I had the same question, Jim. The Town of Millis bills are police details for detail work done for the DPW's benefits, so we do have to do an internal transfer. And the Town Administrator funds are for gas that was used for the Town Administrator's office, so we have to do a transfer. And we can't do a transfer without a town meeting vote on these. And this goes to the second question. These are, basically at the end of last year, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it was mid-July, we declared the books closed. And at that point, we couldn't spend money out of the budget, so any unspent money was turned back to the town, which went into free cash. Now, these bills arrived after we'd closed the books. And this is quite common, this happens all the time. A lot of these aren't even submitted to us by the vendors in time for the books to be closed. So we try to accrue for them, we try to encumber them, but in this case, we were, COVID, I think, made things significantly worse. Usually this is in the $4,000 or $5,000 range, but this year, there was a lot more because of billing delays with COVID, I'm sure. So these do, in effect, on a typical year, are paid out of their budgets, and any money that was left in their budget was turned back to the town at the end of the year, so there's no money left to pay them, so that's why we have to go to the general fund this year.
Any further discussion on Article One? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Garzon.
I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by taxation the sum of $386,188 transferred from marijuana impact fees out of free cash, the sum of $95,940, and transfer from the ambulance revolving fund, the sum of $85,000, for a total sum of $567,128 for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article III operating budget of the June 29, 2020 annual town meeting as written in the warrant.
Motion. Sorry about that. The motion has been moved and seconded.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
In the Spring Town Meeting, we approved a budget that reduced staffing time for certain municipal employees over uncertainty surrounding the level of state support we would receive in fiscal year 2021. During this pandemic, state and federal support has remained level or increased, which will allow us to restore staffing levels to the original FY20 levels as of December 1, 2020. The warrant article details the staffing reductions and restorations that are proposed by this article in the amount of $257,615.89 and provides additional funds for the recreational department, cybersecurity training, a wage salary study, and increase in line item for Millis Public School salaries. This article will also authorize transfers of $95,940 from the Marijuana Impact Fund in free cash to fund certain police staffing, and $85,000 from the ambulance revolving fund to fund fire salaries and expenses.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, Ms.? Fine. Yes, I thought there was someone in the background.
Sarah Kearns, out of Windcrest. So I was just curious what the marijuana stipends were.
Madam Moderator? If I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike Kozinski, Town Administrator. The marijuana stipends are actually a contractual item within the police union contract, and they were negotiated as part of their extra work in preparing for the impacts of having the marijuana facilities in the community and to pay them for the extra time and effort and educational input they needed as we move forward into this brave new world.
Any further discussion on Article Two? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Three.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Berube.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $97,477, and transfer from the Water Enterprise Reserves the sum of $49,118, and transfer from Sewer Enterprise Reserves the sum of $154,932, and transfer from Stormwater Enterprise Reserves the sum of $27,147, for a total of $328,714 to fund the following capital items. From the Fire Department, turnout gear, $43,330. From the Fire Department, SCBA bottles in the amount of $12,000. From the Fire Department, fire hose in the amount of $15,000. From the Water and Sewer Departments, a pickup truck for $44,023. From the Water Stewards, Storm Drain, Enterprise Funds and the DPW, excuse me, Departments and the DPW, a dump truck for $108,586. And for the Sewer Department, an INI study in the amount of $105,775 for a total of $328,714.
Well, second half?
Motion has been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Berube.
The Capital Planning Committee evaluated capital item requests submitted by the various town departments. The requests were evaluated and prioritized based on a number of factors, including statutory regulatory requirements, health and safety impact, benefit to the community, potential to reduce operating costs, and many more. The prioritized list of requests was then forwarded to the Select Board for their consideration and inclusion in the warrant. The six projects in the warrant for approval at town meeting are: Turnout gear for the Fire Department. This is gear worn by responding fire crews and is critical for their safety and ability to operate. The National Fire Protection Association requires replacement every 10 years. SCBA bottles, or self-contained breathing apparatus bottles, are the breathing packs required by firefighters to safely respond to fires or hazmat events. National, excuse me, NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, requires replacement a maximum of 15 years. Fire hose is required to be tested periodically as well and after each use, with replacement required when the hose shows signs of excessive wear or degradation. The requested pickup truck is planned for primary use by the Water and Sewer Superintendent. The heavy-duty truck with an eight-foot plow is requested, and the cost would be split 50-50 by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. The requested dump truck would replace a truck that is 23-years-old. A six-wheel dump truck with a nine-foot plow and sander would be cost shared equally between the DPW, which is the general fund, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, the Water Enterprise Fund, and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And finally, the infiltration and inflow study, which is shown as INI study, is required by the Massachusetts DEP. Extranious water from infiltration or inflow sources reduces the useful life and the capacity of sewer systems and could cause sanitary sewer overflow, environmental impact, and increased operating costs. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Discussion of Article Three. Mr. Angelo.
Jim Angelo, Lavender Street. Did I understand you to say that you were using stormwater funds to buy a part of the vehicle?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Berube.
Yes, the dump truck does have stormwater enterprise funds, one quarter of the total cost attributed to it.
Is that a proper use of this money?
I'm not going to offer an opinion on that one. It's been debated, and we feel it is.
I've been led to believe that appropriation of that money was to be used to fix stormwater problems.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Berube.
Part of fixing stormwater drains in the system is to clean out drains, and I would defer to probably Mr. McKay to answer for sure, but when you clean out a storm drain, you do use dump trucks and other associated equipment for, and cleaning up any type of washouts that come, that happen in the streets. So there is equipment associated with maintaining the storm drain sewer system.
When we were having the meetings about the stormwater fund, we were led to believe that it was going to be used to fix problems and not to buy equipment. I don't have the tapes of the meetings, but...
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Kozinski.
That's not my recollection on the equipment. Obviously, there is some equipment, and the use of some equipment that is paramount in working on stormwater issues and repairing stormwater facilities. If there's specific questions, I know the DPW Director is here, but this truck, as my understanding, will be used at least a quarter of the time to address stormwater issues. The crews do need a vehicle to get out to work on these issues.
Mr. Angelo, I'm going to ask that you let Mr. McKay speak, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This vehicle, if we look at the cost, there was much discussion about this vehicle and the size of the vehicle, and we've reduced the size of the vehicles. You can look at what we have over here. This is a much smaller vehicle. We've cut the size, we're replacing a vehicle of the size that's, you know, on the side here. We purposely looked at what we could use this vehicle for, and when the truck, the street sweeper goes out, right now, the street sweeper will go all the way out to the farthest points in Millis. And when it gets out there, the hopper gets filled, it has to return. We felt that this, with the low body, we will be able to dump the body of the street sweeper into this truck during spring/fall use. And also, as the Speaker spoke before, the repairs, I mean, you still have to get the equipment for the catch basins, grates and covers, cement, sand, and all that materials have to be brought out to the job site. And I don't ever remember stating that the equipment, when this was first instituted, that it would not pay for purchase of vehicles. It was specifically that we would use these funds for further use. It pays for the, all the repairs and replacement costs of anything associated with the street sweeper, right now.
Any further discussion of Article Three?
Madam Moderator?
I'm sorry.
Over here, your left. All right. Just a point of clarification. The question was that the Stormwater Enterprise Fund was set up to fix problems. Actually, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund is set up to provide funds for compliance, and most of the activities that are taking place using all this equipment is to comply with government regulations.
Mr. Angelo.
Madam Moderator, I'm not arguing that we don't need a truck. I'm arguing the fact that the money should be coming out of the general fund. We were told that we were going to be charged the fee for stormwater repair. And I asked this at the last town meeting. You know, you're raising, I don't know, $600,000, and now a certain amount's going for a truck. Where are the repairs? I mean, I don't know if you read the stuff you sent to the House, but you told us we hadn't needed all these repairs, not vehicles.
Any further discussion of Article Three?
Brutus Skinner, E.G., 7 Blueberry Lane. I'd like to speak about the stormwater utility. Mr. Riley is correct that it's set up as a utility. It's the same thing, and it's all about compliance. Yes, part of it is to do repairs of the system, but a lot of it is of regulations that need to be done. A lot of things with the maintenance aspects of it, things are already in space, so everybody needs to think of it as the water utility or the sewer utility. We're buying trucks with the sewer utility, we're buying trucks with the water utility, we're going to be buying trucks with the stormwater utility. Eventually, I imagine, we might be funding employees for the Town of Millis through the stormwater utility. That's why it was established. Thank you.
Any further discussion of Article Three? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, excuse me.
This is Mark Robbins, 58 Walnut Street. I wasn't here at the June meeting, and so I studied the booklet from June and also this meeting. I don't know if this is appropriate place to ask for it, but I don't see it anywhere else, so I figured I'd ask it under the capital budget. Where and when are we going to have some money appropriated to get our roads in this town repaired? Because they're falling in a terrible state of disarray, and if we continue just to let them go, it's going to cost more in the long run to repair them, to fix them in the short term. So I would like some comment on that. Thank you.
Mr. Robbins, that's really not in order with this particular article. Any further discussion of Article Three? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boardman.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $18,000 for the payment of the first year of a three-year lease purchase of a police cruiser.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Boardman.
This article will fund the first year of a three-year lease purchase for the police cruiser in the current year. The total cost will be funded for the first year will be a total of $18,000. The Finance Committee recommends the approval of this article.
This article does require a two-thirds vote. Any discussion of this article?
Is there an inventory of the cruisers that we have? I walk a lot through town, and I've always walked back by the police station. I admire the police, and I admire their jobs. I've known most of them since they were babies. But I always see six, seven cruisers parked in there. Is this really a necessity at this time? That's my only question.
Mr. Kozinski.
I don't know if the chief is back in the meeting or not. I know he was the one flying the drone, taking pictures for posterity.
Yes, thank you, I meant to mention.
So, actually, the chief is back, so I will let him address that. It is my understanding, though, that this cruiser is actually going to be replacing two other cruisers that need to be retired. So, Madam Moderator, I'd ask that the chief address the specifics of this question.
Chief?
Good.
Just one second.
Sure.
Let Mr. Germain speak.
I'll defer to the chief at this second.
Okay, fine.
Madam Moderator, Chris Feier, Chief of Police. Just to answer the question, we absolutely keep an inventory of all the cruisers. For the folks that were on the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen a number of years ago when I first took this position, you know that we had a serious issue with the operations of the cruisers. We had to replace four at once because there was no vehicle maintenance replacement program in place. Since that time, we have put all the cruisers into a replacement maintenance program, so we've worked with the Capital Planning Committee, illustrated the dates and times and benchmarks of when we'd like these cruisers replaced. As you folks know, we don't... As you folks know, we don't, we haven't asked for anything from the town other than police cruisers. We need those to do our job. And that being said, this will be the last cruiser that needs to be replaced in order to get in the cycle of replacement. We get seven years approximately out of each cruiser.
Mr. Jermaine. Thank you.
If I might just embellish on that a little bit, the cruiser that's being replaced is 11 years old. The cruisers that you tend to see in the yard are older cruisers that have been replaced. They use them for details so that they don't tie up the good cruisers. The object is to keep the existing cruisers at a reasonable life cycle, typically around seven years, so that the police have adequate vehicles to meet emergency situations as well as normal operational considerations. It is for that reason that they are submitting to get this last cruiser operational. Additionally, this cruiser will replace the old cruiser, and that cruiser will be used as an unmarked vehicle by others within the police department. So it's not like these, the old vehicles are being disposed of at this time.
Any further discussion of Article 4? Okay, we're going to go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously, the motion carries. Article 5.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $600,000 to pay additional costs of constructing, renovating, and remodeling the Town Department of Public Works facility, which project was initially approved as Article 13 on the annual Spring Town Meeting of May 13, 2019, and amended by Article 11 of the annual Spring Town Meeting of June 29, 2020. That to meet this appropriation, $200,000 shall be transferred from the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund, $200,000 shall be transferred from the Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund, $100,000 shall be transferred from the Stormwater Enterprise Reserve Fund, and the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $100,000 in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby replacing, excuse me, reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. This will take a two-thirds vote. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
Just a quick background on this. The DPW facility, if anyone hasn't been down there, you should take a look. It's a disaster. This dates back, this whole DPW facility dates back at least to 2012, where we had articles on the warrant in 2012, 2015, and 2016 for repairs. The facility has reached a point where it's essentially, it's unsafe and it's unhealthy for employees. Staff no longer use the office space that's there. The Massachusetts Department of Labor has inspected the facility, and Millis is not currently subject to fines, but we are potentially subject to fines if it's not remedied. As the motion indicated, on May 13, 2019, town meeting approved $3.9 million for the construction of the new DPW facility. On June 29 of this year, we approved the transfer of $135,000 of unexpended funds from previous DPW articles, as I indicated. At the current status of this project, the Permanent Building Committee has gone through the process, concept, design, engineering modifications, et cetera, and received construction bids. We're at the stage now where a construction contract is printed and ready to be signed. The additional $600,000 requested in the article is needed in order for the town to sign the contract so construction can begin. As frustrating as this is, this money is needed to finish this project. So where, why do we need this extra money, and what's it for? The original design called for prefabricated structure to house office staff versus building on-site. During the, during the process, it was strongly advised that the town not use that approach and instead build on-site. There are a number of reasons for this, and if someone else wants to step in afterwards, and maybe Jim or Wayne or even Craig could elaborate on that. This change significantly increased the project costs, which the Permanent Building Committee and the project manager were able to mostly offset by reducing the project's footprint and through other design changes. So the additional funds needed consist of the following. Approximately $220,000 is a result of increased material and labor costs due to the impact of COVID-19. $330,000 is contingency costs, most of which are related to potential soil contamination. I know that doesn't add to 600. The Permanent Building Committee and the project manager are optimistic that most of the $330,000 will not be needed for soil remediation, and therefore, it will ultimately be turned back to the town as unexpended funds. However, it is in the contract that's waiting to be signed. So what if this article fails to pass? As the next article will show, if the town does not move forward and sign the construction contract, we will need to spend $275,000 per year for the next two years at least to house DPW staff. They will not continue to occupy the current facilities. As mentioned, the town could face fines from the Department of Labor. Finally, construction costs will continue to go up, making any future decision to move forward more costly. By agreement, contractors are holding prices at the levels indicated in the current contract, but will not do so indefinitely. One final point, if you haven't heard, which I think everybody has, the Clyde Brown School Project came in $3.5 million under budget, which is exceptional. And not only will the interest savings on that pay for the additional $600,000 in this article multiple times over, the principal amount itself will nearly cover the cost of the entire DPW project. So hats off to the PBC and Clyde Brown. Finance Committee recommends this, the approval of this article.
Discussion of Article 5. Jim, can we just say?
Jim Angelo, 34 Lavender Street. I'm not arguing that we don't need a DPW building, but again, I ask, the money that we appropriated to fix stormwater issues, is amount of that going towards this building?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
As the motion indicated, there is $100,000 earmarked from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for this.
Not going towards fixing stormwater-related issues. Going towards putting up a building.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo.
Well, the equipment needs to be housed somewhere.
I know. I'm just saying, I'm just making the point that we were kind of sold a back.
Good afternoon. Jane Harden, 3 Tuckoale Way. Just a quick question with regard to the soil remediation at the site for the DPW garage. Is there currently soil engineers evaluating that? Because my late husband was an environmental engineer, and I know that they can do a lot of test pits to anticipate that before construction begins. So just kind of know where that stands. Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking the wrong way.
It's up to the moderator to decide who speaks next.
Oh, I hadn't even asked or made a noise. Thank you. Madam Moderator.
I defer to the moderator at all times.
There have been test pits done. There is no indication of significant or any real contamination, but test pits have been wrong before. So the contract does have the $330,000, I believe, dollars in it for the, in case there are contaminants. We have no indication that there are, but we won't know for sure until we finish and actually get into the soils and check it. We carried a contingency for the school, and there was nothing. We carried a small contingency for the police station, and there was a significant amount. So we really don't know for sure until we're in the ground, but at this point, there's nothing to lead us to believe we have a contamination issue.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Yes, I'd just like to add one thing to make sure that folks understand. As the project has unfolded, certainly the Permanent Building Committee has made every effort to, let's just say, re-engineer where they can, including a significant amount of the site work is being done by DPW staff to avoid cost for external contractors for that. So no one on the Select Board or no one at the Finance Committee enjoys coming back when it turns out our estimates were wrong. But the fact of the matter is, we now have hard bids. We have a contractor who has agreed to leave the bid open beyond the period that he would have to do that, anticipating that we would take some actions today. And so the project is ready to go, assuming the town meeting is willing to support this additional appropriation.
Any further discussion of Article 5? Sir?
Wayne Clacco, 85 Walnut Street, and Chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. A couple of points in relation to Ms. Harden's question. We have had an environmental study and have, although Mr. Schultz says it is unlikely that we would have any contamination, the test results showed no contamination whatsoever. So we are very hopeful, although it's not a guarantee, that we will not expend any of that fund for contamination in the site. Amazingly, to us, is incredibly clean. The second point that I would, that I would make is that this, the need is real and is not going to go away. And so I certainly am an advocate to support the additional funding, which is the most cost-effective way to accomplish what we've been trying to. But failure to do so will require that the staff in this facility be moved. And so failure to approve this appropriation, this warrant article, will require the town to consider the cost of putting up temporary trailers for two years where you get no value to return on it. It's not a capital investment, and there is no value in that expense. It just goes out the window. So this is by far the most cost-effective, long-term solution to accomplish what we have known since 2012. Thank you.
Any further discussion of Article 5? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 6.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
I move that Article 6 be dismissed. It is no longer necessary.
Okay, the motion has been made to dismiss Article 6. Any discussion? All those in favor, dismissal of Article 6, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 7. Madam Moderator. Ms. McGinnis.
I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by taxation the sum of $40,000 for tree trimming and removal.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. McGinnis.
In the town's continuing effort to remove hazardous and unsafe trees from town property, these funds will be allocated for such tree trimming and, if appropriate, removal of the trees. Areas currently designated are Birch Forest Road area, then Orchard Ridge and Middlesex Street, depending how much Brutus Cantoreggi can get done with these funds. Thank you.
Any discussion of Article 7?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Cantoreggi.
How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. How are you?
Good. I am the tree warden, and I want to thank the Selectmen of FinCon for $40,000. I'd like to be on the record, I did ask for a lot more. I think we know that the trees that came through, or the trees we're still trying to take down, we're very successful in the program we had last fall. We removed over 600 trees in town of various sizes. It's a very cost-effective way, and the best way I can explain that is, it's roughly come down around $200, $250 a tree, which is, you know, some of them were at a DBH of three feet and some were smaller. On a normal day, I can tell you if the town, which has been called in for numerous trees that have failed in areas that we couldn't get to, it could cost, basically get a crew in there, is $3,000 a day, and they can might take down two to three trees. So once again, I'm just letting folks know, we're trying to be proactive. I will be back here in the spring asking for more money. I think we see these older trees, they're starting to fall down. Additionally, just so the folks at home know, that this sum is going to be used for what we call, what's under my purview, which is trees in the public right of way. Devastating events happened at Oak Grove Farm. The place will never look the same again. I understand the Oak Grove Farm Commission is seeking funds for that, and I'd strongly recommend that the, that money's appropriated in future for that, whether through, you know, local appropriation, the Selectmen allowing the, the Oak Grove Farm or the Millis DPW to overspend their budget, maybe do appropriations in the springtime. But Oak Grove Farm, it'll be the same, and it's just another example of we have to take care of our trees. So thank you very much.
Do I have to introduce myself?
Yes, you need to introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Maria Grusinoff, and I live at Birch Street. And I agree that trees need to be taken care of. However, I have a question. Eversource was volunteering to take down trees if they were notified by the tree warden, and they would take them down at no cost to the people that use Eversource. I'm wondering if that was ever pursued, because I did contact, because I did contact the tree warden and never heard from him, so I don't know whether that was taken into consideration. It would have saved the town a lot of money.
Mr. McKay, would you like to address that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, we did use that with Eversource.
This gentleman is going to answer your question.
So Eversource did come in, and I had notified the Finance Committee and the Select Board that Eversource in the last two years has spent over, upwards of almost $300,000 in taking trees down in Millis. The trees that we took down that Brutus had just, you know, they've doubled that in taking trees down. They've also noticed, notified us of a disease, and I believe in the oak trees coming up in the very near future. And what their participation in that, they're not sure if they're going to be able to do that. Again, they took, they took down almost 800 trees in Millis over the last two years under that program, being notified by the tree warden and the DPW. So they have been, I can't thank Eversource enough and their officers that assisted us in this.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Cantoreggi.
I'd just like a little public education also, since I'm up here regarding trees. So we do work with Eversource. They have to come before me every year, and they give us a list of areas. They do a grid in town, and we have to approve upon what's going on. But folks at home need to understand two things here. Eversource is only taking care of their property, and their property would be their, their power lines, okay, and the public right of way. So there could be a tree out there that's dead. Eversource is not going to touch it, okay, if it's not going to potentially affect their power lines. It's the same thing for us. People call all the time to me or notify the Public Works, like, oh, my God, there's a tree. It's like leaning over the wires and everything else. The tree could be healthy, it's not an issue. I cannot use public funds.
I cannot use public funds, or I should say, not me, I can't recommend to the Public Works or commission to take down a branch that potentially could take out a power line, because that is private property, and it's against the law to use public funds to maintain private property. It'd be no different. People call, oh my God, there's a branch hanging over my house. You know what? If the tree is on their property, I can't, there's nothing I can do about it. It's private property. So it's not necessarily a fine line, it's pretty clear and cut, but a lot of folks at home or residents don't want to hear that, because they look at it as immediate need for them. So the best, the best thing to do is we call up Eversource, and I can say that Mr. Gonzalez is, he really has spent a lot of money in this town cleaning up trees, but we got a lot of dead trees in this town, a lot of big ones. So thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Any further discussion of Article Seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Eight.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Two.
I move that the town vote to amend Article One, Section One of the town's general bylaws by deleting the first sentence and replacing it with the following. The annual town meeting for the transaction of business will be held on the first Monday of May, and the annual meeting for the election of officers and such other matters as may be voted on the official ballot will be held on the second Monday in May.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. C. Sorry about that mispronunciation the first time.
You were right the first time. This article would amend the town's general bylaws by moving the annual town meeting to the first Monday of May and the annual town election to the second Monday of May. This change would allow the Select Board members who are instrumental in developing the operational budget for the next fiscal year, as well as warrant article recommendations, to participate in town meeting. Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any discussion of Article Eight? All those in favor of Article Eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to Article Nine. So the Milis Planning Board, in an open public meeting held on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 via Zoom, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article as written to amend various sections of the Milis Center Economic Opportunity Overlay District, MCEOD, and zoning map amendment.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws as most recently amended by amending the various sections as written in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article Nine. Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
This article would approve without changing any portion of the current Milis Center Economic Opportunity Overlay District bylaw, extending the overlay district to include 25 additional commercial parcels. The purpose of the MCEOD bylaw is to enable the redevelopment of the downtown commercial area into a mixed-use village center, provide alternatives to single-family housing, promote economic development of the town center. As previously stated, this amendment does not change any portion of the current MCEOD bylaw, but rather extends the overlay district to 25 additional parcels. Infrastructure for this proposed extension already exists in this portion of Main Street and Pleasant Street in the form of streetlights, sidewalks, and crosswalks. This amendment would also create additional opportunities for housing options other than single-family homes, including affordable housing, which will assist in meeting the goals in the Milis Housing Production Plan. Finally, this amendment does not constitute spot zoning, which typically is a provision that benefits a single parcel of land different from surrounding property areas, but rather helps to level the playing field of the proposed parcels. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion of Article Nine? This does take a two-thirds vote. I'm sorry, the lady in the beige sweater, please.
Judy Ackman, 161 Village Street. I just have a question. I know you're saying Lavender Street, Thom Street, Hammond Lane. I can see how that kind of goes together, but are we going to end up with another unit like we have stuck in on the end of Spring Street that kind of looks down in all the neighbors' houses? Or are we going to be more caring and careful how we're being neighbors when we're building things?
Sir? Or Mr. Angelo, sir? I'm sorry, Mr. Angelo was first.
If we pass this, and my property goes to mixed use, is my taxes going to go up just for that change, or are my taxes going to stay the same, because I'm a family household?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Zinski. Whoever's thing is going off, could we please turn it off? Thank you.
I cannot speak for the tax assessors, but I will say the town has no split tax rate. So whether your property is within a, a mixed-use zone, or residential, or commercial, that in and of itself, as best of my knowledge, would not have a detrimental impact on your tax bill.
Mr. Angelo.
My basic question is, I have a family household, and you're changing, saying I can use mixed-use development or commercial. Are you going to raise the assessment of my property?
This is Carol Johnston, I'm the Finance Director. The best of my knowledge is that the way that properties are assessed is based on sales of the previous year. So the only way that your values would increase is if the increase in sales within the town increased for that type of property.
Sir, are you still interested in speaking? Yes. Okay.
Brutus Cantoreggi, Board of Assessors today, besides tree warden. The way it's taxed would be basically what's on the property now. So if it remains a single-family home, it would still be taxed as a single-family home. The lot would still be taxed as a single lot that's, can be used if it's changed. But as the treasurer said, if the housing value goes up, then obviously the taxes go up.
Thank you. Sir?
Richard Nichols, 47 Grove Street, Milis. To address the first question on if we do the overlay district, all of these would have to go through a special permit. So if you have something that's going in the MCOD, it'd have to go through the special permit process. The Planning Board can try to make sure that the properties are fitting with the neighborhood. However, we can't tell somebody, you know, we want the house to be purple, we want to have certain trim on it. There are certain limitations of what we're legally allowed to do. So we try the best we can to make sure that whatever is put in fits the neighborhood, but we're limited by law to what we can do.
So let me just clarify, you're a member of the Planning Board, sir?
I'm the chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion of Article Nine? All those in favor of passing Article Nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare that there was a two-thirds vote, and the motion passes. Sir, Mr. Probit? Do I hear a second on a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Sir? I didn't have to do that, did I?
Mark Robbins, once again, 58 Walnut. Sorry to prolong this meeting on such a beautiful Saturday. But since it's not an article on the warrant, and I've asked it previously, can anyone give me a minute or two of their time to discuss the road situation, so Mr. Jim McKay can have some monies to address the situations in this town, not only on Walnut Street, and to the small percentage of the town of Milis that's here, but vast majority of our towns, or our roads in town?
This really doesn't speak to anything on the warrant or business today.
Correct.
So does that mean we can't talk about it? I suggest that you get in touch with the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, et cetera, and, and bring this up as an issue outside of this building.
So the only way to discuss something if it's an article on the warrant?
It has to be part of an article that's on the warrant, sir. Thank you very much. So there's a motion on the table to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending today.